I'd like to call this Saline City Council meeting to order if you please rise to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Girbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, DPW director Fordice, city superintendent engineer Ruble, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, and assessor Skoll. For the rest of you in the audience this evening, if you please sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Mr. Girbaugh.
Just one amendment, I think because this has been a hot topic. Could we talk about the odor issues that were at the sewage plant?
Yep. Well, why don't we add that, Mr. Girbaugh, after reports and other announcements before water sewer line insurance?
That's fine.
Okay. Everyone clear on what that addition is? Actually, we don't need to enumerate it as a separate discussion item, but under reports and other announcements, I want to talk about a resolution that Mr. Girbaugh and I will be offering at our next council meeting related to the property on Monroe Street, the old Hoover Ball Baring Universal die cast. But again, that doesn't need to be enumerated separately. I'll bring it up under reports and other announcements.
With that change, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Very good. Move by Mr. Girbaugh to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would seek a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Rhodes.
So moved.
Moved by councilwoman Tahar, seconded by councilmember Girbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the first of two presentations, and the first is a proclamation for Mr. Robert Cindric, and I'm going to be joined up front by Mr. Cindric. Good to have you with us this evening, as well as the mayor of Myland, Michael Armitage.
I'm going to turn it over to my friend, my good friend, the mayor of Myland, and I have to preface by saying that, well, clearly, Mr. Cindric is an outstanding educator who has served both the community of Myland and Saline, and it's an honor to be here this evening to recognize him, but the idea, this is the brainchild of the mayor of Myland, so I want to thank him for his leadership and for contacting me to do this, and I guess at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, mayor. So, as we know, Mr. Cindric received recognition from his parent magazine back in December, and when I saw that, I immediately thought of the influence that Mr. Cindric had in my life as being a music educator in Myland, and at that time, it was about Christmas time, and to see the impact that he's had on my life, you can actually just look at my iPhone and see the list at Christmas time of music such as "Peace, Peace" and "Angels' Carols" and the different songs that I probably wouldn't have been introduced to if it wasn't for your music program. And also, as part of, or since being in high school and middle school and going through the music program, I'm involved at church, I sing just about every weekend at church, and so I thought it was important to bring forward the difference that educators make in people's lives, so, and I really appreciate the colors you decided to wear today.
I thought about that before.
I didn't even think of that, but you are wearing Myland colors, the big red, all right. Well, the mayor and I both signed and prepared a proclamation in your honor, and I'm going to read it in its entirety because it actually turned out quite nice. So whereas Mr. Robert Cindric was a music teacher at Myland area schools from 1979 to 2000, and whereas Mr. Cindric led the choirs of Myland area schools to state competitions, earning a top score of one on many occasions, and whereas Robert has served as a member and president of the Michigan School Vocal Music Association during his tenure with Myland area schools, and whereas at Saline area schools, Mr. Cindric continues his dedication to the musical education of students, including establishing an extracurricular choir called "The Swarm of Voices," is that right? Very good. For elementary school students, and whereas in his 36 year of teaching, he teaches kindergarten through third grade at Woodland Meadows Elementary School and assists the Saline area players in their musicals, and whereas Robert Cindric has introduced countless students to the art of music, expanding their appreciation for music beyond just the classroom, and whereas Mr. Cindric was recognized by Parent Magazine, as the mayor said, as the top teacher of the year in 2014. Now therefore, we, Brian Marl, mayor of the city of Saline, and Michael Armitage, mayor of the city of Myland, do hereby proclaim, excuse me, that both communities join Parent Magazine in recognizing Mr. Robert Cindric as a top teacher, and recognize that many lives have been enriched to music in both communities as a result of his tireless dedication to music education. And this document is signed and dated on the second day of March 2015, again by both myself, Brian D. Marl, mayor of the city of Saline, and Michael Armitage, mayor of the city of Myland. Mr. Cindric, congratulations. He's going to forego his right to speak, but again, we appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to be with us. Congratulations, and thank you for all you've done for the city of Myland and the city of Saline, and we will continue to expect great things. Thank you, sir.
So much.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Scruggs, you want to come up? We'll move along with the agenda, and we're up to, how did we title this on the agenda this evening?
MRPA.
MRPA awards. Okay, Ms. Scruggs, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. So, this is our time to brag a little bit. Can you hear me? Okay. Two weeks ago, we had our Michigan Recreation and Parks Association annual conference, and our department received several awards, and so we wanted to re-present them here at city council and make sure our community knows about the different awards that we received. The first one is the Innovative Program Award. Our aquatics director, Stephanie Ferguson, created this American Girl Slumber Party program, and really did a fantastic job with it, and we submitted it as an innovative program because it has a little bit of a twist of a normal program, the American Girl Tea Party, but she really put a twist on it and really made it something unique and something that other communities can do for their departments. So, we did receive the Innovative Program Award. Oh, sure, absolutely. And the second, one of the next awards we received is a marketing award for our integrated marketing campaign for "Check Out the Rec." And this was, integrated marketing means it's a combination of media, we did direct marketing, postcards, we did videos, we used the cable television, we also utilized the Facebook yard signs and all sorts of different marketing tools to have our "Check Out the Rec" program. And "Check Out the Rec" was a program that initiated in 2013 to introduce all the new changes that our city council approved, which was expanding our hours of operation, including fitness classes with memberships, couples' memberships, and so on and so forth. So, we're very proud of that one. Then our Sunshine Lambert, she submitted a programmy award, which was for our recycling program, or eco-friendly program, for one of our kids camp weeks. We did a whole theme on recycling, on composting, on gardening, and it was awarded the Recycling or Eco-Friendly Program Award. So we're very, very excited about that. You know, our staff that we have here in Saline is amazing. Everyone teams up together to come up with these crazy ideas, and, you know, we rely on a lot of our volunteers. Our city clerk, clerk Royal, she's one of our all-time volunteers. She comes out to almost every event and really helps out, and we do rely on a lot of people throughout the community for that. So we thank you. And finally, our department, we nominated our mayor, Mayor Marl, as a local elected official of the year, and the legislative committee through MRPA gave him that award. And I'm very proud of our mayor. He's been exemplary in supporting Parks and Recreation, not just here in Saline, but throughout the state of Michigan. Very supportive, especially throughout our county, and he has done a lot for our department, putting together the REC task force, making some significant changes for the REC Center, and it's proven to be a very, very successful change. So, we wanted to thank him and to make sure that our community knows what a great terrific mayor that we have, and so I wanted to congratulate you in front of your peers and in front of our community. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, let me just say very briefly, it was an honor to be recognized by our staff and, of course, the folks at MRPA. It was quite an honor, very humbling, to receive the local elected official of the year award, and to be recognized, actually, with our secretary of state, Ruth Johnson, who received the statewide elected official of the year award. So again, I appreciate the confidence and the kindness, it's much appreciated. But more importantly, Ms. Scruggs, I don't know if our city, your department, received the most awards during the conference, but a substantial number, and I think that is a reflection of your leadership abilities and how competent and how dedicated and creative your staff are. And I was given my award at Legislative Breakfast, is that what they called it? Yeah. And then attended sort of a, well, sort of a, we walked the expo hall, I guess, but I had an opportunity to talk to a number of elected officials and local officials from throughout southeast Michigan and actually throughout the state. And our department, Ms. Scruggs and her team, are really recognized and really respected for how terrific they really are. And so that was really, the true honor was understanding how well-regarded our community is in this organization across the state. So congratulation to you and to your team. Give them a round of applause, yeah. Terrific job. And these, I assume, will be on display at the REC Center?
As soon as we get our term.
Okay, all right, very good. Are you recommending that in the upcoming budget? Okay. Not sure it's a necessity, but who would say? Okay, moving on on the agenda this evening, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll move to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to approve as submitted. Hearing no comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 15-34. This is resolution to join the municipal coalition for intervention in DTE's electric company rate case U-17767. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution authorizing the city of Saline to join the Coalition of Intervention in DTE Electrical Company Rate Case U-17767. Is there a motion to approve or not to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Any discussions or comments? Mr. Girbaugh, would you like to make a comment since you were really the force behind this resolution?
Yeah, the reason why I want to push forward on this resolution is, again, this concern about our potential additional expense we're going to incur as a result of us trying to be proactive and moving towards energy-saving devices and so forth, and DTE deciding now that they're going to reassess and change the rates at which they're going to charge, and we'll see this probably coming forward on additional items in the future. So I think at this point in time that we need to discuss what this really means in terms of, are we actually going to be saving energy, or are we going to actually end up costing us more in the future, or if there's better alternatives for us? But I would like, if Mr. Campbell knows a little bit, I believe there is potentially a cost for this because we're joining in with the MML.
A potential cost for joining this?
It indicates, it says, "Based on a formula that is based on the proportionate number of streets is estimated not to exceed $1,000." It's the fourth whereas. I know that, or maybe the city clerk.
Terry's the one that's been researching this.
It's based on the number of streetlights.
Okay. I wasn't sure what that is.
So, that's where I had to contact DTE to find out, or not DTE, the municipal league, to find out where that number came from.
Do we know how many other communities are joining in with this?
So far, right now, the only two that I know is City Mayor Auburn and City District.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Any additional comments or questions? Well, I would just add, as Mr. Girbaugh commented on and as the resolution and motion allude to this fact, but this cause is being joined by a number of municipalities, not only in Washtenaw County, but across the region and across the state, and I suspect that that number will only grow in the coming days and weeks. So, I appreciate Mr. Girbaugh's leadership on this issue and his advocacy. I do think it's an important cause to be involved in, and I will be voting in favor of the motion offered by Mr. Roth and Ms. Dillon, because, like I said, I think this is important, and I think this advocacy is critical, quite frankly. Thank you. Anything further? No, that's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 15-35. This will be a motion regarding the establishing of more long-term parking/traffic control order number 2321. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 26, 2015 memo from city manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve traffic control order number 2321 establishing more extended time parking in the downtown area. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, okay. Thank you, Ms. Cybo Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Girbaugh. Mr. Campbell, do you care to go over your memorandum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we staff discussed with city council some of the things that have come up with, since new parking restrictions have gone online January 1st, and of course, and as the mayor has said a number of times, that council will review the enforcement and such in June. But in the meantime, one of the things that has come up is parking spaces for downtown businesses for employees, as we have, again, the intent is to make sure that all the prime parking spaces in the downtown municipal lots are left open for customers. So, while I think we've seen that there's been positive transition as far as folks, employees utilizing those spaces, as you can see from one of the requests, a council at the last meeting was to determine, at least to the best of our ability, to determine the need for parking. As you can see, Sergeant Bassel did a survey of downtown employees from the, that the number of employees Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which are the, reflect the four-hour parking restrictions in the downtown lots. So, and as we also talked about, that there's one new business coming online, at least with the brewery, and then also an existing Latitude, it's a software educational company downtown, they're bringing on a number of new folks, and so, all those together, all that together, staff had talked at the last meeting and continues to agree that the possibility of the recommendation to add a total of 12 additional extended parking spaces. So this would be in parking lot two on the north side of East Henry, behind Comerica and Max and such. May recall, there's already some designated spaces for Comerica as well as PES, but we would propose, and you can see on the very back page, which is the attachment to the TCO, the traffic control order, you can see there's 12 spaces, six, both six and six on the east and west sides of that southeast corner on parking lot two, as it comes off of East Henry, so we would propose that. We also wanted to show the on-street parking spaces that currently exist, and those are also long-term, they're, you know, on the 100 block of North and South Ann Arbor, those are two-hour parking spaces during the 8 to 6, but as you can see from the couple of the maps that Mr. Fordice put together, you'll see the attachment. So like you have East Henry Street, you have the five-mark spaces that are right up near the corner, and then, of course, they're all on the north side, five-mark spaces next to the new brewery coming online. You have, going to the east, you have another nine on either side of the Sun Engineering Building, so those are additional nine spaces. Then on the West Henry side, you can see marked out, you have the ones that are marked at the corner, right there at South Ann Arbor and West Henry, there's a couple, two spaces there, but then as you proceed to the west, you have another two, three, so you have another 10 spaces as you proceed to the west, just to let you know that there are other long-term parking spaces for folks to utilize as well that are currently there. So this is what I, to me, is a short-term fix. I can't define short-term because I don't know how long it's going to actually be, but certainly there are additional parking spaces, and of course, as you all may recall, parking lot five on McKay Street, on West McKay, 20 spots, and on average, typically, it's only about four or five spaces that are filled at any one time during that Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions for city manager? Ms. Tahar.
Yes, thank you. In the, I was interested in, well, it's all interesting, but I was wondering about the spaces possible, there's room for three-mark spaces, two-mark spaces on West Henry, East Henry. Are there any plans to actually mark those spaces and indicate in some way that this is all-day parking is legitimate in these spots?
Correct, but unfortunately, as you know, time of year, it's not the best time to paint, but yes, those, Mr. Fordice and I have had discussions about, at least, at the very least, painting them, and the other thought I had is that if this goes through, we would send these out to the downtown businesses so they could share them with their employees.
It's my observation, I don't have data, but my observation is that when spaces were painted on East McKay next to Union School, that they started being used much more regularly as parking spaces than before they were marked.
Absolutely, right.
So I think that painting the parking spaces would be very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Any additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just curious on parking lot number four, where we've indicated all the extra all-day term parking. There's four spaces as you get closer to West Henry Street, where you come right off of the West Henry entrance. Are those city or are they not city? You don't have them marked as green and green?
I believe those are city spaces.
Yeah, they're not.
They're just not extended.
Could you flip-flop those with the four that are up next to the, I'm just seeing that those four that are up near the buildings would be potentially better for customers than to have long-term parking there? And make, identify these as long-term parking back here, near Henry Street. One, two, three, four here, and one, yeah, five of them, I guess. It's just I think that we've really been trying to encourage the long-term parking to be farther away, not next to the building if that's where we're going to have more customers coming.
Okay.
You see that?
You're saying, so, of course, it says parking lot number four at the bottom, but the page itself is not numbered. You're saying to take the four spots, Mr. Girbaugh, on the northern, the northwestern most extreme of that parking lot and transition them to the, well, actually, there might be five spots there, right? Four or five on the southeast corner.
Right. Directly behind the houses on the corner of South Ann Arbor and East Henry, or West Henry.
Would we need an additional traffic control order to make that change?
I don't know.
Debating.
Are we able to maybe, because I, maybe they're not posted for the people in the apartments?
Yeah, I don't know.
They're not dedicated.
They shouldn't be dedicated.
I don't believe they are. They could be.
If I may, mayor.
Absolutely.
If we could, we could bring this back at the next meeting, we'll research those spaces, and then we can clear up if we in fact.
Need a traffic control order if they're reserved? Yeah, okay. You comfortable with that, Mr. Girbaugh?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Mr. Fordice? Yeah?
Those spaces aren't posted with anything.
They're not posted with anything?
No.
Okay.
They're not dedicated.
Let's still bring it back and do the research on the traffic control order, whether one is necessary.
It just looks a little bit laid out that way. I might as well use all spaces for that purpose.
Would your preference, Mr. Girbaugh, then, to be that we designate all five of those spaces as long-term? Okay.
Yep.
So we're clear. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Ms. Cybo Koenig.
Just a question about the maps. In parking lot number three, the Henry Street parking lot, there are two handicap spots there, and I'd just like some clarification about the rules for how many handicap spots are necessary in a parking lot. I can't see the use for a handicap, it is so far from any businesses that the viability of that as a handicap spot seems very low.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I had the same question and comment about parking lot number five.
And five, yeah, there's one on five, too. So those are the same situation.
So can we get clarification on that for our next meeting as well? Or, Mr. Ruble, you prepared to comment on that?
All right, when we purchased and rehabbed or built those, though, those are standalone parking lots, and ADA, which is a federal law, requires one per 25, and that the first one has to be at least van-accessible. So when you get past 25, then you have two, but one has to be van-accessible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Any other questions regarding the motion that's before us? Well, I'll just add my two cents, and I don't mean to belabor the point because I believe I addressed this at our last meeting, but I think establishing 12 additional long-term spaces in lot two is both appropriate and prudent. Obviously, that lot overall is well-utilized, but we have a lot of businesses in that vicinity who employ a large number of individuals for shifts that well exceed four hours, oftentimes are eight and beyond. Max, for example, we have Latitude Consulting, which is located above Max, they're expanding, growing their operation, that's terrific, we want that to continue, and then, of course, at the corner of East Henry and South Ann Arbor, we have our very own Microbrew Brewpub that will be coming online this spring, and so I think there's going to be added pressure to that quadrant of downtown in the coming months, and again, I think it's both appropriate and prudent to create 12 additional parking spots in lot two. So I appreciate staff's work on this particular item, and I'll be voting in favor of the motion offered by Ms. Cybo Koenig and Mr. Girbaugh. Are there any additional comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 15-36. This is renewal lease agreement with Saline area schools for the ropes course. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 25, 2015 memo from city manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve a five-year lease with Saline area schools at a rate of $1 per year. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Koenig. Mr. Campbell, do you want to briefly go over your memorandum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, this has been a... As you can see, this has been a, this, third, I think this will be the third extension of this property. This is the property adjacent to the high school that is owned by the city. That's where they have the climbing wall and the low ropes course and such. And as you can see from the attached letter from Superintendent Scott Graydon, they're, Celine Area Schools are requesting to renew the lease for a five-year term, and staff would recommend that, that the city council approve the five-year renewal.
Any questions for City Manager Campbell? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just refresh me, is it the fact that we haven't tried to offer any of this land up for sale because it really is not developable? And this portion, I'm just trying to remember.
Well, I mean, since my time here, we've not, it's not, it's not been considered for development. We also have our, adjacent to that, between this property and the railroad tracks, of course, is city-owned property where for our leaves and such.
But I mean, the issue is that there's not enough property there to develop for potential? Or is it just that we want to preserve it for city use?
Well, as far as the, the spot that we're not leasing, we want to preserve for city use. But yeah, we, again, since I've been on board for over seven years, that, as far as any development of that has not come up, so. Unfortunately, I apologize, I can't answer.
That's fine. I guess I would, I'm going to renew this, but I would like to look at that potential because I, as everything, all of our other assets, we need to look at and make sure what we're doing for the city is the best for the city.
Maybe we can go to that, Madam Clerk, and revisit that one, and it's prudent to do so. Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding this motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Sibokanik, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 15-37. This is first readings of the Code Review Task Force Proposed Ordinance Amendments. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Code Review Task Force Proposed Ordinance Amendments and to approve or not to approve the first reading of the following amended ordinances. Number one, liquor licensing. Number two, animals. Number three, law enforcement standards. Number four, juvenile curfew. Number five, public peace and morals. Number six, weapons. Number seven, blight. Number eight, snow. And number nine, noxious weeds.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. We had a rather lengthy and comprehensive work meeting on this subject, I believe, about a month ago now with our legal counsel and staff. I thought it was a productive conversation. I don't know if there's anyone from staff, either Mr. Rubel or Mr. Campbell, who would like to add anything at this time? No? Mr. Rubel? Mr. Campbell, do you care to add anything? No? Okay. Obviously, you all received last Thursday in your packets a rather lengthy memo from Dickinson Wright, from Scott Smith, dated February the 10th. I hope you all had an opportunity to review that again. There were just minor changes and amendments made from the initial document that you received about a month ago. And of course, if there are any questions, staff will be happy to entertain those. I do want to note, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, that it is certainly acceptable at our next meeting to entertain each one of these ordinance changes individually, but we did receive the green light and clearance from legal counsel that it is appropriate and legal to approve them all in one motion, which obviously makes it simpler, but if it's the desire of counsel to break this apart and do what would be nine separate motions at our next meeting on March the 16th, we can certainly do that. So I'd be interested in hearing everyone's thoughts on that as well as the, the motion itself. Mr. Gearbaugh?
I'm fine moving ahead with this as the motion's written because I moved it, but curious, is there a possibility of making a direct link on our website so people can get access instead of having to drill down into the agenda or whatever to be able to review these? Because this is, requires a first and second reading.
We can put something on the front page that includes some of the documentation.
Yeah, I would just like to have something and make notice of that so that individuals have the ability to read this because this is, there is some significant changes in some of these, so I think that would be
Okay. Yep. Excellent. Does anybody have any objections then on March the 16th, having all nine items included in one motion? We're all good with that? Okay. Excellent. Is there any additional comments related to new business item 15-37? No? All right, then, it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Roth, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and these ordinances are now on second reading. We move on to new business item 15-38, fiscal year 16, operating and capital budgets for Celine Area Fire Department. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 25, 2015 memo from Treasurer Bennett regarding the approval of fire, of the fire department's fiscal year 16 operating and capital budgets and to approve or not to approve the proposed SAFD operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2015, 2016 in the total amount of $341,773, and to recommend that the Celine Area Fire Board adopt or not adopt said budgets. Is there a motion?
I so move to acknowledge, to approve and adopt.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment at all this evening?
I can if there's questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Bennett? I think I've said this exact same thing, folks, for the last three years. Well, one, it's an honor to be a member of the Celine Area Fire Board. In fact, I've been a chair now the last two years, and we welcomed Ms. Dillon to the board at our last meeting. As we all know, the department is, is run in a really exceptional way. Competent leadership, dedicated staff. And I have to note that the number that is before you this evening in the motion, $341,773, if that department wasn't run as efficiently and effectively as it is, and if we had not entered into an agreement with three of our most valued neighbors more than 30 years ago, there's no way we would be getting a fire department for that cost. So you all know that, but that's important to convey to, to our constituents, the people we represent. You know, we get a great service, a great product at, all things considered, a very nominal cost, so.
Absolutely. And to write on the mayor's comment there, this year's budget is slightly reduced by $1,200 from what the Celine Area Fire Department portion from last year for the city of Celine. And as the council is aware, through our budget process, we will determine how we fund that, whether it be through a fire special assessment, which has been approved by the voters in the past, or if we use part of our operating mileage.
The other thing I should note as it relates to the budget specifically is that we are moving forward on a 10-year plan to boost compensation, to boost pay for our firefighters, to get them in line with what the average is in the county, but we have also saved money this past fiscal year by renegotiating the health insurance coverage for the department. We also gave the chief a nominal salary boost, also to keep him in line with what his counterparts are receiving in Ann Arbor, Ypsiloe, Superior Township, Ann Arbor Township, Chelsea and beyond. So very proud of this budget, and again, I think that the number reflects that, that we receive a really exceptional service and product at a, at a nominal cost. Are there any questions or comments regarding this motion or the fire department's budget? And of course, as you all know, Fire Chief Heft would welcome any questions, concerns, thoughts you have at, at any time. No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Tahar, to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to discussion items, commission, committee, or task force reports from council members. Mr. Roth?
This past, last week, the Substance Coalition met. We were on a break for eight or so, a couple of months, and we're back alive at it, and we'll be meeting again on March 19, 6 to 8:00 PM in the council chambers. Public is welcome to come.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roth. I thought it was a very productive meeting, and we welcome any interested parties to attend that, that next meeting. Can you repeat that date one more time, Mr. Roth?
March 19, 6 to 8:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Very good. Any other commission, committee, or task force reports? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a point of change. Historic District Commission now has moved its meeting to be the first Wednesday of the month instead of being the fourth Tuesday, with hopes that we may potentially be able to get another individual to serve on that day. So we still have two openings, and we're working to get those built.
Great. Terrific. If you have some interested parties, as you know, send them to the website to fill out the application, and we'll try and get them appointed just as soon as we can. We'd like to have a full Historic District Commission. Ms. Tahar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gearbaugh's announcement reminded me, the Arts and Culture Committee continues to have one vacancy, so anyone who is interested in that committee should follow the same path to apply.
Wonderful. Any other commission, committee, or task force reports? No, how about reports or other announcements? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to mention the Washtenaw Urban County Draft 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan is currently in the public comment phase. That lasts until March 19. Just as a little bit of background, this is not a topic that comes up very often here. Celine joined the Washtenaw Urban County in 2012, and the Urban County is a group that receives, an organization that receives funding from HUD in the form of community development block grants, home investment partnership program funding, and emergency solutions grant funding. And it is managed and advised by the Washtenaw County Office of Community and Economic Development. When Celine joined, I believe, I should back up and say one more thing. So every unit of government in the county is eligible to join the Urban County, and the money that comes to the county is based on who is, who are members of the Urban County. When Celine joined the Urban County in 2012, I think we felt that Celine would join so that additional funds would come to the county that, but that we would not necessarily be a direct recipient of funding in the city of Celine. The, the funding is used to create housing and economic opportunities and to provide suitable living environments principally for low-to-moderate-income residents. And because it's HUD funding, there is a lot of, let me see, administrative overhead and, and rules and regulations and conditions. However, this year, it became apparent that there might be an opportunity for us to get some funding to be used to help with facility improvements and enhancements for Celine Area Social Services. So in this year's, in the upcoming action plan, Celine Area Social Service is in, proposed to be funded for facility improvements. And the, the amount of money that is currently projected and hoped for is $40,000, which would be a real boon to them. So the, this will be voted on by the Urbans County Executive Committee at its meeting at the end of March, so I should be able to report at that time. I hope I'll be able to report at that time that the funding will be, that is, has been approved.
Wonderful. Appreciate your leadership on that. It's very important. It's good to see some of those dollars flow to Celine, but more importantly, to an organization that, that certainly needs our help and does so much to, to, to help and assist those who are the most vulnerable in our community. So thank you again, Ms. Tahar. Other reports or announcements? Well, I have two. The, the first is pretty exciting, pretty cool. Jean Bondi, who's a retired police dispatcher, is with us tonight, and she passed along an invitation that's not only extended to me and everyone on this dais, but to the entire community. Her dad, Joe, who's been a Celine community resident his whole life, is that correct? Yeah?
1920.
1920 he moved here? Okay. Well, not, not quite, but we'll cut him a little bit of slack. Is his actual birthday on the 22nd, Jean?
His birthday is the 20th.
The 20th, all right. So on March the 20th of this year, Joe Bondi turns 100, which is a pretty amazing milestone, an accomplishment in this day and age. And there's going to be an open house, a celebration of, of his life and accomplishments at the Celine American Legion. Of course, that's at 320 West Michigan Avenue, Celine. And again, that's on the 22nd, that's a Sunday, and it's from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And I'm going to be working with Jean in the clerk's office to prepare a tribute from, from the city, from, from the council to, to honor him and to congratulate him on, on 100 years of life and hopefully many more years of health and happiness. But again, Jean wanted me to extend this invitation to any and all of you. Again, that's the 22nd of March from 1:00 to 4:00 at the American Legion.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. And then the, the second item, as I had a brief conversation with Mr. Gearbaugh on Friday, and as many of you know, we are renewing our efforts to remediate the former Universal diecast Hoover Ball bearing site on Monroe Street adjacent to Curtis Park. And we really feel like we've got the wind at our back, that there's some momentum. But one of the things that would greatly benefit our efforts is having engaged members of Congress who are advocates on our behalf to get the EPA to finalize and approve a remediation plan. And so what Mr. Gearbaugh and I will be doing between now and our next council meeting on the 26th is drafting a resolution, which we hope everyone on council will vote to approve, having each one of you then sign that resolution, calling for this specific action, for members of Congress to work with city staff, Johnson Controls, and any and all other stakeholders to encourage the EPA to, to finalize a remediation plan. Then we will forward that resolution on to our members of Congress. So in the House of Representatives, that would be Tim Walberg. In the United States Senate, that would be Debbie Stabenow, and now our most recent junior senator, Gary Peters. And then have staff follow up with them to, to work and hopefully advocate and advocate aggressively on our behalf. And you may recall, and this isn't a partisan opinion, this is simply a fact, but during his, be it brief tenure in Congress, Mark Shower met with city staff and my predecessors a number of times on this issue and tried very hard to be an advocate and to be a supporter. Obviously, his tenure was cut short, and he was not able to help us after 2011, but we're hoping to engage with Congressman Walberg and Senators Peters and Stabenow to assist us in this endeavor because cleaning up and remediating that site is, is simply of vital importance. So just wanted to give you the heads up so you're not blindsided by that when the packets are delivered a week from this Thursday. Mr. Gearbaugh, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
No, it's been a priority that we should have this cleaned up, and part of the concern is that I think we do need to reinforce it with our congressman because that's part of his responsibility and duty that he needs to be looking out for our community, and I think we need to step up on that.
So again, that will be offered for your consideration and hopefully your approval at our next meeting. Are there any other reports or announcements? No, Mr. Gearbaugh? Do you want to, or certainly we can have Mr. Campbell maybe address?
I'll defer to Mr. Campbell.
All right, Mr. Campbell, the odor that was apparently coming from the wastewater treatment plant, the floor is yours.
Sure, if Bob wants to come up, just while he's coming up, we were, city staff received odor complaint approximately 8:40 Friday evening, this past Friday, the 27th of February, and we had what I like to call boots on the ground, 30 minutes or less. Mr. Fordyce was out investigating, trying to determine the cause. The, the Friday night's investigation were inconclusive in, I mean, we checking all the base, all of our bases as far as were there any backups, and we had regular flow, and the plant appeared to be operating normally. And the other, the other kind of the kicker, if you will, is typically in the winter, we don't experience these types of complaints, but, but we did. And then Saturday morning, I, I went out as well, and then Bob responded as well to plant, and I'll, I'll steal a little bit of his thunder since he made the effort to walk up to the podium, but, but I'll, so anyway, so we did, and thus far, I think it's been resolved, but I think one of the things, I think, that added to the odor, or at least odor lingering, were the atmospheric conditions, where you had such cold, very extreme cold weather, heavy air, there's kind of a few analogy I use talking to staff was if, you know, you start, in weather like that, when you start your car, the exhaust doesn't dissipate, it, it lingers for a while, and so it takes a while to go away, and so if you can imagine that odor doing the same thing. Plus, we're coming out of the, if not the lowest spot, one of the lowest spots in the city, and the wind coming out of the south-southwest pushing it, and it just kind of lingers. Anyway, so I'll turn over to
Well, Todd did a great job covering it, but there's, I just wanted to go a little bit more detail. We did come in and do our usual housekeeping for odor complaints. Problem with odor is it's so transient nature, it could smell one moment, and the next the wind shifts and it's gone, and it's not like a, a pump being off or a light being out where you can look at it and say that's where the issue's coming from. and say that's where the issue's coming from. We have, the odor scrubber was down for service. We always do it this time of year. We have to clean it out, you know, just simple maintenance on it, so it's usually down. We also are investigating the possibility, I checked around with a couple different superintendents of water, wastewater treatment plants in the area. Unfortunately, we have such an archaic approach that it's kind of hard to find somebody that still has RBCs. But they suggested that investigating a possible slug of something toxic going through the plant that could have damaged the microbes on the RBCs. So far, we have no evidence of that. We did take some samples, but it does take time to incubate in the lab. That could be it. We also have several RBCs that are down. That's part of the next phase that's going to be worked on this summer. The odor scrubber does work, but it's not up to where it should be, and that's also part of Phase Two. But I just wanted to explain that.
Appreciate your analysis, and, and Bob, I think you were spot on, that odors and smells are extremely transient. In fact, I think the, the complaint originated from a text that I received at about 8:30 p.m. on Friday from an individual who was near Henny Field, so Bennett and Harris Street. And I do greatly appreciate, obviously, I got in touch with Mr. Campbell within moments, and the fact that we had boots on the ground within, I think, half hours is a pretty liberal estimate, I think it was, or a pretty conservative estimate. I actually think he probably had boots on the ground within 20, 25 minutes, and I, and I greatly appreciate that. And I think that's indicative of how responsive staff is when these types of issues arise. So appreciate your work, and hopefully if you find something more concrete that you can identify as the culprit, you'll, you'll communicate that back to us. Are there any members of council that have questions or concerns, comments? No? Mr. Roth, please.
I, I have concerns that it's been very smelly, especially this winter.
Yeah.
And I, I get it very frequently, and also during the summer, it sometimes has been very close since I have adjoining property to it.
Sure. Well, imagine with your property, when we remove sludge, you're, it's right there, and it's kind of hard to avoid. We've had ongoing issues, that's why we've developed Phase Two. And it takes, just takes a while to get the ball rolling on that. Hopefully, we can address the RBCs and the odor scrubber this summer or early fall at the latest.
Are all the areas where?
No, sir.
This stuff covered?
No. No.
That makes a big difference if it's covered.
Well, the, the sludge storage, the stuff that's close to you is all covered, and, and this summer, we had issues due to the last phase. It took a while to get back in the swing of it. The odor scrubber is designed to pull off the RBCs and the primary settling tanks and the grit tank, excuse me, not that portion of the plant.
Yeah, I was just saying, I've made, I've noticed it too occasionally, but it's usually about the same time, and it's at night. And I think it really is the atmospheric conditions because it seemed odd, it, as at times, you can smell it coming up out of a storm sewer, but that's only if it's been stirred up or whatever.
Well, yeah, storm sewer would be a separate issue altogether, yeah.
Right. But that's the kind of smell you smell, but that one is, it's been strong, but it's normally been around 8:30, and I apologize, I shouldn't, I probably should have called it in beforehand, but I figured it was just because we have such weird weather going on right now, and so unfortunately, we have to.
Especially where the plant's located, being in the low spot as well as next to a hill, we can, we have a windsock that we use for logging odor complaints, and we also have the flag in the front. And it'll be many times, the flag will be pointing one way at the parking lot, and the windsock's pointing the other way, 100 yards up the hill. So it's very hard to, to track down sometimes.
But that's good to know that you do that type of assessment. So thanks, that helps to understand that.
Anything further? Bob, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your, your analysis as well, Mr. Campbell. Okay, last but certainly not least is the sewer line insurance or the sewer line warranty program update from Mr. Fordice. Mr. Fordice, why don't you come forward and, and take the floor? And of course, I would reference to council that you have a memo from Mr. Fordice dated February the 25th regarding this program. So, Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours, and maybe after some brief remarks, we'll open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you. Following up on a discussion we had, I think, two meetings ago, requested information from Service Line Warranties about the status of their, their program here in Celine currently. And they provided the attached information. We have, there are 616 warranties in place right now. Over the course of the program, which started in mid, late 2011, there've been 79 claims filed. Four of those claims have been denied. And there's a, in the packet there, there's a spreadsheet describing the reasons they were denied. Two of them were denied because the people making the claim did not actually have a policy.
So, I apologize. Were, were they under the assumption that, that perhaps everyone in the city had the policy?
No. One of them called to enroll and then immediately made a claim.
Okay.
Because their sewer line was backed up. So they explained that that's a pre-existing condition, so you can't do that. One of them had the sewer warranty and called to make a claim on their water line. So those were the two.
Fair. I apologize for interrupting.
Yep, no problem. The other two that were denied were kind of fine print issues. The coverage is for the water line itself and for leaks or blocks and that. And one person called with a broken shut-off valve. Warranty does not cover that.
No.
And similarly, another person had a frozen valve. And again, the valve's not part of the, the warranty. There have been 75, I use the term repairs in my memo, but some of those 75 services provided could be simply jetting out the line if it was blocked or doing a videotape inspection. So there've been 75 onsite responses, problems corrected. And they send out customer satisfaction surveys after each experience, and the overall rating from respondents was 4.28 out of 5. So, and there were some pretty positive comments along with those surveys.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Any questions for our DPW Director?
It's kind of the observations, you can tell which of our neighborhoods where those problems are. Having lived on Tower Drive, I understand why we've got a number of those issues.
Well, again, I'm, I'm very pleased, Mr. Fordice, that your research concluded that, for the most part, overall, people who have the insurance or have the warranty are very pleased when they have to make a claim. You know, as I've stated before, on the surface, I understand the, the benefit of a program like this because I had to replace my water and sewer line prior to the city offering the service. And I want to say that was approximately $15,000 down the drain.
Yeah.
Pun intended. So again, appreciate your analysis on this. And actually, the only comment that I would, I would note with, with some level of importance and significance is if you hear additional complaints or concerns from citizens who have the policy, that have the warranty and are not getting the kind of response that, that they really should receive.
Right.
From, from the company, I hope you'll let us know.
Absolutely. Yeah. And typically, when there is somebody who's dissatisfied, I, I do hear about it. The two, the two non-enrollee denials, I recall hearing about those from those folks. And the other ones, those are not familiar to me, but the, people, yeah, I mean, people call me, so.
Any other questions for Director Fordice? Mr. Gearbaugh?
You had mentioned that they cleaned out. Do they do that instead of, they will do the clean out and cover that cost of sewer that's plugged?
Yes, if that's all that's needed.
Oh, great.
Yeah. But typically, they'll, if there's a blockage, they'll, they'll do the clean out and videotape it to see if there's a structural problem.
Great, okay.
But the cleaning is mainly done to identify whether they need to take the next step and replace the?
It's a diagnosis tool that has a positive effect also.
Well, looking at the number of incidents on Tower, that's why I was wondering, because most of those are the issues with the trees that are right directly over the tiles that are in those homes.
Nothing further? Mr. Fordice, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anything, anything else to come before City Council this evening? No, then we'll move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question of City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any citizen comments? And again, I'll ask one last time, is there any other business to come before City Council this evening? All right, please note that our next meeting is on March the 16th. We do have a work meeting to discuss pension and OPEB at 6:00 p.m. with a regular meeting following at 7:30. And then our next meeting will be on April the 6th with a work meeting at 6:30 to discuss the upcoming fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. We've already excused the absence of Councilmember Rhodes, or Mayor Protem Rhodes, excuse me. So at this time, the Chair would seek a motion to adjourn at 8:32 p.m.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Koenig. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned.